Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, March 17th, 2014. Would you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in regular session, we just ask for guidance and direction as we act on the various affairs on our agenda. We are ever mindful that we live in a world that is constantly full of challenges, and certainly, as we always do tonight, we want to remember all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special guidance be given to them and to all of those from our country who are serving so ably in what continues to be a very provoking and troubling world. Tonight, as always, we ask for guidance and direction as we act upon the issues before us, knowing that each and every one of the members of the City Council here tonight has in their minds and souls the very best interests of the city of Batavia in mind as they vote and act on the issues before them. We ask for all these bussings. Amen.
Alderman Holman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Vassillion.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen members of the City Council are present and accounted for for this evening's meeting, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Do you have this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one change. We are taking item number F, Resolution 14-26-R, off the consent agenda, and it will be number 8A.
Okay.
And I believe that's all. So I move we accept the agenda as revised.
Second.
By Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the agenda as revised. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Moving to item number five, which is presentation of the tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you. The consent agenda is as follows. To accept and place on file, A, the Historic Preservation Commission minutes for February 24th, 2014; B, the February 2014 building report; approvals are C, the March 14th, 2014 payroll in amount of $737,278.25; D, the accounts payable check register in amount of $3,426,245.96; E, the City Council minutes for February 17th, 2014; G, Resolution 14-31-R, increasing authorization for use of funds in the Electric Utility Rate Stabilization Subaccount; H, Resolution 14-38-R, authorizing change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant improvements contract with Hayes Mechanical; I, Resolution 14-28-R, authorizing execution of the contract for Fermilab Drainage Improvement with Hart &amp; Sons LLC; J, Resolution 14-29-R, authorizing execution of the Wetland Services Agreement with Gewalt Hamilton Associates, Inc.; K, Resolution 14-30-R, authorizing execution of the Wetland Services Agreement with Engineering Resources Associates, Inc.; L, Resolution 14-33-R, exercising an option to renew for one year an intergovernmental agreement for animal control services between the city of Batavia and King County; M, Resolution 14-34-R, authorizing execution of a revised intergovernmental agreement with the school district for utilization of the city's vehicle fueling facilities. I move we accept and place on file consent agenda as presented.
Second.
By Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Moving then to item number six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody tonight wants to speak about something not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is presentation of the Main Street Minute. Good evening. Thank you for coming.
I'm Marcia Boyce of Boyce Body Works, and I'm a member of the Main Street Board and wanted to give the Main Street Minute tonight. In February 19, Main Street volunteers donated 178 hours for planning, meetings, programs, and events. And we have two new business updates. The Savage Park Vintage Rehearsals will be having a soft opening at 14 North Island on Tuesday, April 1st, and Hummingbird and a Shoebox will be having this grand opening on Saturday, April 19th at 11:00 a.m., and everybody's welcome to attend. As part of our ongoing retention meetings, Main Street has met with four businesses in February to learn about their businesses, see what their challenges are, and help them however we can help them grow. Looking ahead, we invite anybody who's interested in getting involved with our community events to attend one of our upcoming meetings. The House Walk on Tuesday, March 18th at 7:30 at the Main Street office, 7:30 p.m. The Green Walk meeting Wednesday, March 26th at 7:00 p.m. in the Main Street office. Cocktails in the Park Thursday, March 27th, 7:30 at Gama House. And an R&amp;R meeting Wednesday, April 9th at 7:00 at K. Howes Jewelers. If anybody has any questions, feel free to contact Joy or Paul Mainstreet. Tonight, in lieu of presenting our Business of the Month, we would like to briefly update you on an exciting Main Street project. A few years back, we created Project Mosaic as a work plan to provide office space to small businesses with a shared conference room and other amenities. To keep up with the evolving workforce of small businesses, entrepreneurs, and virtual offices, Batavia Main Street is looking to relaunch Project Mosaic to be one of the first collaborative coworking facilities in King County and the only one of its kind in western suburbs. The goal of Project Mosaic is to drive economic development in our local community, not just by having a space that can create jobs and bring over forty new businesses into downtown, but by supporting those businesses with a membership-based collaborative work environment comprised of flexible use open space, private and semi-private workspace, technology, office amenities and resources, meeting space, and most importantly, a connection with others in the working community. The presence of community is a crucial part of this experience. Being around other professionals allows for sharing of ideas and the ability to learn from people working in a wide variety of fields. Batavia Main Street is taking the coworking concept one step further by injecting professional business associations, mentors, and potential angel investors to help accelerate the growth and success of its members. Currently, we are in the process of writing a proposal for the King County Revote Grant and request your help. Main Street manages over twenty-five work plans each year, and Project Mosaic will be our most ambitious work plan to date. Its success depends on a strong public, private, and nonprofit partnership. Please consider writing a later letter in support of Project Mosaic to include with our application and email to joy@bataviatv.com. Do you have any other additional questions about our work plans or anything about Project Mosaic? Please feel free to contact us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, moving then to item number eight, which is the appointment. You've got a memo from me about we need to reappoint Chief Randy Deike to the Batavia Fire Department Pension Board. Those appointments come up every two or three years, and this is pointing us up, so we need to do that. So I'd ask for a motion of confirmation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
ATAC.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no no's, one recuse. Alderman Holman, you want to come back? Okay, moving then to item number nine, which is Ordinance 14-22, amending Title VIII of the Batavia Municipal Code relating to electrical service regulations and rates. Alderman Clark, do you have this?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We've had several meetings regarding this topic. One was strictly with a review and update and informational session on Prairie State. We also had another committee meeting regarding this, the rate increases that are being proposed tonight. Due to the financial situation with the electric utility, we need to make changes to Title VIII of the code related to electric service regulations and rates. Some of the changes in this ordinance are creating two new rate classes, changing some language that needed to be updated. Some of it is revising some economic incentives for our electric users, and a big part of it is raising the rates. So in 2014, I'm going to give you a breakdown of the rate increases per class. So in residential, there'll be a six and a half rate increase plus a $4 a month increase to customer charge. Small commercial will have a 3% rate increase plus $7 a month increase to customer charge. Commercial will have a 6.5% energy rate increase plus $5 a month increase to customer charge. 7.5% demand rate increase. Industrial will have a 6% energy rate increase plus $25 a month increase to customer charge. A 4.5 demand rate increase, and it will also reduce the primary meter charge from 2% to 1%. In 2015, there'll be some similar increases, and this is strictly to help maintain the financial sustainability of the electric utility. None of us are happy about this vote, but we all realize that this is a necessary vote. It is also affecting, you know, us as residents too, so this is a difficult vote, but after discussion with staff and the public, I think people realize that this has to happen. So there were several options presented to us at committee, and this was the one, the one that I just described, that reflect the choice of the committee that was most tolerable, I would say, for the rate increases across the board for all rate classes. So with that in mind, I will make a motion to approve Ordinance 1422, amending Title VIII of the code related to electric service regulations and rates.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of Ordinance 14-22. Any discussion? Alderman Callahan?
I would like to, there were concerns that were brought up at the meeting on the 11th regarding the use of the sales tax to supplement the electric utility.
That's the next item agenda.
Oh, I thought it was as part of this also.
Well, the sales tax is not included in this, but these rates were based on that sales tax component, but it's not included in this ordinance.
Right, so as going along with that, I know we're not talking directly about it, but it would affect whether or not we would be able to vote for, if the numbers in here are determined by the sales tax increase, chicken before the egg, you know, if we're voting on these with this under the assumption that the sales tax would go through, I want, I would like to be clear on the sales tax so that it is then, then it goes to these numbers that we're basing it upon. So it would be clarification of the sales tax.
I know Bill wrote a memo that went out today regarding this. Do you want to make some remarks, Bill?
Yeah, it's not on. Yeah, it could be simpler in that we're a home rule community. We have, we can exercise any authority or powers that is not specifically taken away from this state statute. There's no such state statute. We consult with Kevin Trezor, our attorney, as well as Bond, attorney, who initially helped draft some of the original documents to make sure that our interpretation that we made earlier was correct. And basically, a sales tax is a general fund revenue that can be used any way that the City Council believes is in the best interest of the community. I just can't put it any simpler than that.
Question?
To go to Marty's point, though, it seems as though these two items should be reversed. That, because if we vote the 6.5% increase on the assumption that we're going to do the half-cent sales increase, what happens if we have discussion and vote, and we don't go with the half-cent sales increase? We just voted a, you know, if we reverse it, we get that issue out of the way, you know, up or down, and then, and then address this.
Well, it wasn't changed at the beginning of the meeting, so we can always change Ordinance 1422 if amended at a next, at a later meeting if, for some reason, the other ordinance fails.
Would that be your preference?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, we, I don't know if we can change the agenda right this second when we've already started the meeting.
Lisa, I think, could I jump in on this?
Sure.
Because I think.
We could, we could, you two can withdraw the motion. You could act on that one, and then we could go back to this one, if you want to do that.
All right. I'll draw my motion.
I'd like to make a point on that, if I could. If we, if we reverse this agenda now, and we have the conversation about the sales tax, and the sales tax gets changed, however it gets changed, or it passes, I don't know what would happen, we then would have to have a whole nother discussion about the rate increase that was just made a motion for, which in essence then means it needs to go back to committee, because I thought we had the conversation.
Good point.
And that's why there's an ordinance here to vote on.
I mean, I guess we can do this either way. The council desires to do it.
It's up to me.
The first one's mine.
Just continue forward, I think. I mean, it's, what Dave said makes a whole lot of sense, and so what came first, it doesn't really matter. So just continue forward and.
I might, I.
Don't work out.
We can always go back to committee. The sales tax has to be voted on tonight. If we, if it is approved, it has to be acted on for state purposes and their deadlines. So this one, even if for some reason that doesn't go through, this one could go back to committee if it had to, without it being critical versus the sales tax one is more critical as far as the timeframe. So I will make my, remake my.
Keep the original.
I'll keep my original motion. I will not withdraw my original motion.
And I will second it again.
Okay, we have a motion and second then for this. We have some, Mr. Olmstead, did you want to make a comment? Could you give us your name and address for the court, please?
Hi, Jane Olmstead, owner, record of property to form all our schools. I just wanted to comment about, I know there's been great discussion about the electric rate net. I just don't think you're being fair with the public. The one thing that we can all agree on is the issue that's creating the necessity for this increase is not the public's fault. It wasn't the public didn't vote to go into the Prairie State issue. It was the city of Batavia, it was the staff, it was the City Council. The problem that I see is the fact that the public is being expected to absorb the entire effect of this, they're being expected to pay the insurance policy for the errors of the city. It would be my suggestion that this is a golden opportunity for all the members of the City Council to stand up and say, I represent the people. I think we should have an amendment to this that says that for every percent that the electric rate is increased, the city will be required to reduce their expenditures by that same amount. So therefore, the city staff should be directed to reduce their expenditures in the city of Batavia at the rate of 6%. And any increase in the electric rate in the future will require the same reduction in city staff. That way, the citizens can see that the city is taking care of some of the burden and that they're not getting off scot-free for their errors. I, this is just unconscionable that the entire process is going to the public and the city is increasing their expenditures rather than reducing. I think this is a chance to show who we represent.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of Ordinance 14-22. Court, call the roll.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
No.
Holman.
No.
Sam.
No.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
The motion's approved. Eleven yes, three no. Okay, moving then to item number 10, which is Ordinance 14-20, an ordinance amending the city of Batavia Home Rule Municipal Retailers Occupation and Municipal Service Occupation Tax. Who's got this one? Alderman Stark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is regarding the increase to our city sales tax. Being a home rule community, we are able to increase our sales tax. We have discussed this several times at committee. There were some questions that came out of last Tuesday night's J.COW meeting that were asked, and we did receive an email and a printed copy of responses from city staff. There has been some talk of amending this, which I would recommend against. I think that staff has given us reasons why we should not bring this up for debate every year, and so I would recommend to council that we pass Ordinance 1420, an ordinance amending the city of Batavia Home Rule Municipal Realtors Occupation Tax and Municipal Service Occupation Tax.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Chansett, for the approval of Ordinance 14-20. Any discussion?
I would just like to.
Callahan?
I would just like to say, I have the same reservations about this. We have until at least April 2nd to think these things through. I believe some of the questions that have been put forth at the last meeting and presented to me tonight have not been heard by people yet. I, to be clear, I want to support the option that does the least amount of damage to this, to this community. I want to make sure that, as we're triaging right now, that we do pay attention to our industrial base, because without, with ignoring them or putting more of a burden on them, it creates a devastating snowball that I do not want to oversee the destruction of. That being said, I want to make sure that as we're doing this, we are crossing all of our Ts and dotting all of our Is, and I don't feel, from what I've been hearing from people, is that there is a full jumping on board with everyone yet, and we owe it to them to do that. That's all I've got to say.
Anybody else?
I would agree with that, but if we're to move forward, I would, I agree that every year is extensive, but I would look to amend the ordinance and put in a sunset clause after, say, three years, and put the onus on whoever's on council then to revisit this, be forced to revisit this and see where, where we stand at that point, instead of just assuming that this is going to be revenue hitting the community forever.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second then to amend Ordinance 14-20 to put a three-year sunset clause on it. Is that what I hear you say? Any discussion on that one? Alderman Chansett?
I would ask that we wouldn't support that, because it just seems to me that we can at any time revisit this issue. I don't see why we would put a shackle on ourselves or require ourselves to do something that we can change our minds next week if we would like to. So I would, I say we wouldn't need to support this amendment. If we don't agree with this, we can change our minds at any time.
I would, in response, say it's syntax. It's a minor difference, but traditionally, without a sunset clause, it's just going to go through, and it's going to be an easy way to go through for future councils, because they don't even have the responsibility to say, you know, they, they need some ownership as well, so.
I think it sends the wrong message to the community, though. It says that we're not, we don't support our own thought process. That's interesting, because I think it sends just the opposite message, that the community has concerns that once a tax increase is put in place, it'll never be repealed. And this, to me, says, no, we're going to address it. It's not just going to be here automatically, and that if we don't see the merit in continuing it, it will, it will pass after three, after three years and go away. So, and it, but, you know, like Alderman Serone said, is it, is that we can at any point between now and then say, this is good, it's worth keeping, it's working the way we represented to the constituents, and they seem satisfied with it, let's continue it. So I see no harm in, in creating the sunset. I think it's responsive to what, what people in the community have asked of us.
Callahan?
I would just like to say to Alderman Serone's point, if the, the thought process
I would just like to say to Alderman Serone's point, if the, the thought process behind this is to support the, the problems that we're having with the electrical, well then let that stand on its own merit and have a sunset clause to it. And if you want to, for it to remain in place, to pay for trucks or whatever on later on down the line, then have that discussion at that time and let that sales tax increase stand on its own merits. This one is being told to us and presented to us as for the electrical utility. It is not for anything else. If it is for anything else, then say that it is for something else.
Well, I don't think it's written that it specifically for the electric utility is implied. If we had a situation where a cost came up, I'm sure we would, we wouldn't say, we wouldn't touch that money. I mean, the money is a general fund money. There's nothing in there that says it has to go for electric rate relief.
Correct, but the understanding of that, the way that people are taking this to read is the only reason we are doing this is because of, we need it to assist the electrical problem.
But it's not written that way, so.
No.
And I think that's a misconception because I think the money needs to come out of the general fund to meet these obligations. And so whether we're using the money that's already there today or the supplemental money, it's all one big pool. And so it's all coming out of the general fund and how the money gets there will be via the sales tax vehicle. So I, I don't think it's fair to say that this is just to support the electric utility. It's just we need more money and this is a way to increase the amount of money we have.
Well then, isn't, aren't we doing a nine eleven tax and using the utility to scare people to say we need to use this and we're actually just raising the taxes?
Your argument is there, but it's not in writing to that effect is the point I was making. That's not how the ordinance.
I know what it's, I know what it's saying, but for us to be truthful and honest, it should say.
We are saying why.
Alderman Brown?
Yeah, Your Honor, thank you. Dan, I, I agree with you and I certainly appreciate what you're saying. And having been around here as long as I have, I understand that we can, at the next meeting, change something if we want. However, I've also been around here long enough to know that if something isn't in writing, we forget or we change places or we might not be here next year. So for that reason, I think it would be a good idea to force the future city council to revisit this decision because this was a, this is a very difficult decision for us all to make. We don't want to raise taxes. So I think it kind of puts the onus on the future city council three years from now to have to reevaluate that sales tax increase and is it necessary for electric or is it necessary for the general fund and, and just forces them to have that conversation. And I think that's probably a good thing to do. So I would support the amendment.
I, I feel the same way. You know, I look at this as, you know, we've got a utility that's hurting. This is a crutch to get through hopefully the next two or three years and it's done. If it's not, this forces us to go through and make that decision. Do we keep it for that or do we keep it for some other purpose? But you know, this is something that I don't see or I hope is not something that we have to keep in effect. So I have no problem with supporting the three-year sunset on it.
Any other discussion? Mr. McGrath?
Just technically, the, the, Alderman Callahan, this has to be in the hands of the Department of Revenue by April first. So if it didn't pass today or you wanted to reconsider, you'd have to have a special meeting or something before April first. And secondly, the staff doesn't care when you decide to review something. The original, I, I don't think it's realistic to think that this is a, a two-year kind of help. The original recommendation that the staff made was for four years in terms of how long we thought we would need this for the electric utility. So our just recommendation would be that, that it be four years. But regardless of that, I do have some actual wording. I think that it would be better to have a, if I can suggest some wording for the amendment, and at the end of each of the paragraphs, a, if, you would add the wording until March first, either two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, whatever, and therefore, and thereafter be reduced to one half percent. Then, then it automatically, it tells the Department of Revenue exactly what's going to happen as of a certain date. I think that's.
Yes, you're not changing the, the content of the motion, just putting it in a better.
No, and I'm just, I'm just saying that the staff had recommended that it be, that this, the program that we needed to rely on these would be a four-year program and certainly as we kind of talked about today, whatever the city council, however, we are responsible to bring you a budget every year and to, and for you to see where monies go. You tell us and you've told us so far that this money goes to the electric utility, that's where it goes. It's pretty simple.
I understand. The, the, the specific question is, is the motions for three years with a sunset, and I just want to make sure that the revised language that you're proposing echoes that in just better legal language.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Except he was, the staff was just recommending.
They're recommending for our motions, three, right.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor to amend the ordinance for a sunset after three years, which we put it in seventeen.
Correct.
Court call the roll.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance fourteen dash twenty is amended with the three-year.
No, that was just the amendment.
Just the amendment.
I mean, we've, we've approved the amendment. I'm, I'm just saying it's been amended to include that amendment. So now we have to take a vote on ordinance fourteen dash twenty as just amended. Any discussion on that further? Court call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Homan?
No.
Sam?
No.
Facilian?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Nope.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Approved, ten yes, four no. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item number eleven, the administrator's report. Mr. McGrath?
Thanks, Sheriff. Three for four. I hope everyone's starting to notice the work that's presumed on Wilson Street. It's basically the gaps for the benches and the hospital rooms so far. They're very nice. We're at the time of the year where we're getting ready for construction season and getting ready for some programs. So there's a lot of preparation work. We're working on the street program. You know, we, you know, we have some, received some IDOT grants. So there's a lot of looking at our long-range programs to get those things in order. The street program is obviously worked by all the works. They have additional engineering in addition to trying to put the streets on us. IS is working with the in-house committee on asset infrastructure, software. They've entered some four different firms and are going through the process of that to make some decisions as to recommend and forward. Redevelopment, of course, we know we've got a lot of proposed developments. Just for your information, we do have a redevelopment meeting every week and we generally have about fifteen different agenda items on the agenda. We've, there's a, a design's been, or temporary design's been completed for the art stock parking lot expansion. That'll be coming to committee as part of the street program. The bike commission has received, it's, it's okay for the seventy thousand dollar grant. We're, we're working with Springfield to see if they can process this to, to report the expenditure of those funds. See, they're currently designing the water street, bus street crossing where there's no corner on the southeast corner of the intersection of First and Water. They're designing the, the paving of the Baptist Church lot. That may be a one to two week program where that lot will be out of commission. So we'll be working with main street businesses and the residents. Certainly will not have that for during any, during weekends or festival. And I think they'll be seeing in the next couple of months, they're, they're drafting a SOQ for the construction manager for the Houston Street project and many other things that.
Any questions? Mr. McGrath? Thank you. Committee reports. Community development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of meetings to announce tomorrow night. Tuesday, March eighteenth is the J-Cow. We have one item on the agenda tomorrow night. That is the housing study recommendation. And then historic preservation is meeting Monday at five thirty. That's March twenty-fourth. I did want to announce tonight, Your Honor, everybody gets the building report. But I wanted to make mention that, I'm very pleased to say that the building department received plans for and issued a permit for some improvements at a facility on East Wilson Street called Iron Mountain. It's my understanding they do record keeping there and, and what have you. And the amount of improvements that they're going to be doing to their building extends to well over one million, four hundred thousand dollars. So that's good to see. Another improvement in one of our industrial uses.
That's on East Wilson Street East to Kirk Road.
Yes, it is. That's all I have.
Public utilities, Alderman Clark?
Yes, we have one item on tomorrow night's joint committee of the Hall of Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvements. And that's all I have for public utilities. Thank you.
Okay, city services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. The only thing that I have on city services coming up on March twenty-fifth at the J-Cow meeting would be two dump truck purchases.
Governmental services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. On April first, there's a discussion regarding J-Cow. I also wanted to make mention on, under Dave's, under community development, the plan commission. Meeting this Wednesday, there is going to be a public hearing for the amendments to the comprehensive plan, land use map, an official zoning map for the southeast corner of Kirk Road and Winter Energy Pass. Just want to get that out there. Thank you.
All right, other business from the city council? O'Brien?
Just want to let everyone know that this weekend Mooseheart Basketball won the state title in class one A.
Good they knocked.
Well, they, they did a good job. My wife and I watched the game. She went down on Saturday for the semifinals. And it's a good group of young men, so just wanted to let the community know of their success.
I was going to mention that obviously we had the opportunity and the honor earlier to have the Batavia High School football team in here when we won the state championship. And because Mooseheart now technically is kind of, I suppose technically where those kids live is physically not in the city, but the rest of the campus is. So basically the Batavias team, so I would, my intention would be to talk to Mooseheart about inviting the boys down here and presenting them the same kind of certificate that we invite, made for the football team, working that around their schedule and whatever have you. But my intention would be to, at future meeting, have them in here for.
I think that would be great.
And I think I can pronounce all the names.
Yeah, we'll have the voice of the Bulldogs handle that, some of those names. Anybody else in the council? Anybody else in the audience?
Your Honor?
Alderman Wolf?
Just want to remind everybody out there that's watching to vote tomorrow.
Absolutely. Okay, going to the mayor's report. I would like to take a couple of minutes and talk about a couple of things. If you look at the Daily Herald newspaper today, on the front page, there's a story of a, of a couple standing at the Displanes Oasis and they're taking a picture of themselves with the oasis on the I ninety in Displanes behind them. And the reason they were, I guess the Daily Herald chose to run the story was is that the oasis is going to be demoed in the next few days and it's going to be totally taken down. Now, that particular situation may have some interesting impacts on the community of Batavia in the days ahead. We may be a couple of years away from it, but one of the things that's going to happen is, is that with the rebuilding of I ninety, which is one of the reasons that we're taking down the Displanes Oasis, they are going to be putting on the I ninety expanded shoulders. And with the expanded shoulders on I ninety, the plan is to put a pace bus route on I ninety that will start at Randall Road in Elgin and will run east into the CTA train stop at Rosemont. And so the idea here is, is that this is probably not going to be, as most of you know, I represent the Kane County on the Pace Bus Board. And the idea of Pace is, is that we're not quite sure exactly when this is going to be rolled out, but this is the plan. This is why this is being done. And the, and I just want to share with you some of the things that will be happening as a result of this. The idea is, is that we will have this bus route that will run up I ninety, starting probably in either Montgomery or Aurora. It'll run up Randall Road. We've already installed some of the bus stations on Randall Road out there. They're present at Wilson and up in front of Sam's Club and that general area up to the corner. And we've got them in Batavia already situated. They're going to be putting them up the rest of the way. I think we've got them in Geneva and St. Charles now and they're going to be going up Randall Road all the way to Elgin to the bus stop, to the, to where there'll be a bus transfer station at I ninety and Randall Road in Elgin. And so the idea is, is that when I was a kid in the early nineteen fifty's, you used to be able to walk into downtown Batavia and go over to the Chicago Roar and Elgin Railroad Station, which is underneath two East Wilson Street, and walk down the stairs and get on the inner urban train that ran on where now the Illinois Perry Path is, and it'll take you over to Eola. And then you got off of, of that vehicle and got on another train that took you into Chicago. So you could commute from downtown Batavia to downtown Chicago on a daily basis. Well, I don't know if we're ever going to be able to do that, but this next thing may work out because now you're going to be able to go out to stay Randall and Wilson or McKee and Randall or Randall and Mill, Randall and Fabian, get off and get on a, stand underneath the bus stop there and the bus will come up Randall Road from Aurora, pick you up. It'll take you all the way up to I ninety at Elgin. You'll then do a transfer at I ninety and you'll go in on the, and the, basically the shoulders that are now going to be built on I ninety will, will be where this bus will run and the bus only is supposedly the only vehicle that's going to be able to run on the shoulders. So it should be, if there's a backup in traffic, the bus should be able to run right alongside the traffic backup. Now, this is already in play on I fifty-five down in Will County going into, on the Stevenson and almost into McCormick Place in downtown Chicago. So the idea here is you'll be able to go out to Randall Road in Batavia, get on the bus, go up to Elgin, transfer over and get on the one. And the first stop will be, I believe they're going to have a stop on the east side of Elgin, but then they're going to take you over. They're going to have a stop on Route fifty-nine. There's going to be a stop about at the Sears Campus in Hoffman Estates. There'll be a stop that will have a transfer bus that'll take you down to the Woodfield Mall area in Schaumburg. And then the next stop, interestingly, and I think this is the one that's going to catch the Batavia fancy, where the I ninety oasis is now being torn down. They're going to be running a parallel road up through O'Hare Airport, which is right on the south end of where that is. And then CTA is going to run a bus up there and you'll be able to get off the bus out of Elgin at that place where the oasis now is and walk over and get on this other bus and it'll take you to any terminal in O'Hare Airport. And coming back, you'll be able to do the same thing. So Batavia people will now have direct access to bus transportation that'll take you to O'Hare. Now, if you want to continue on and go to downtown Chicago, I just talked to the mayor of Rosemont last week and he was telling me he's all excited about having an upgrade on the CTA transfer station, which is in Rosemont there, just west of Cumberland Avenue. This bus out of Elgin will, that will be its last stop and it'll turn around and take people back to Elgin and to the connector coming down through Batavia, to Batavia and Aurora in the other direction. But anyway, you'll be able to get on, get off there and get on the CTA train, uh, train facility and that'll take you into downtown Chicago. So you'll be able to, basically if you want to, you'll be able to commute from Batavia up ninety to, or up, Randall to ninety and then into Chicago on that route if you, and I don't know how many people want to do it, but it'll be certainly a new form of transportation. And when you figure the costs of parking in downtown Chicago, the costs of just transfer, you know, moving your transportation going in there, we're optimistic that this is going to be a very popular service. Quite honestly, we are, our socks are being blown away by the number of people who are using this same type of facility on I fifty-five, starting in Will County and going into Chicago. And we think that the same thing could be replicated here. And in a perfect world, the ideal thing will be eventually, once they get the ninety-one running and the I fifty-five running, that they'll throw one at I eighty-eight at some future date, although that's not yet in the planning stages, but they are talking about it. So the idea is, is that the region, from a public transportation standpoint, really needs to have some, some alternative force, forms of transportation. And I think in cooperation with the tollway and the RTA, that finally some progress, progress is being made and some forward thinking is being done that will be able to move some people. And I think, I know of a lot of people in Batavia who will like the idea that you should be able to go to Randall Road and get on the bus and take it into O'Hare Airport and then be able to come back and get, get off and wait out there with your luggage and have somebody from town come back out to Randall and pick you up and take you home. Makes a lot of sense. So those are great things. You have a comment to make?
Just, just on that, if I, if I may, it's a, I, I think it's very important and it's an exciting thing when we see public transportation being expanded and for, and for a couple of reasons. It's, you know, obviously for, for sustainable buildings designs and, and for higher quality of life. We're not destroying our, our world today, our, our earth. And secondly, it's a, I mean, I grew up in Brooklyn, New York and we were not a rich family, not, we're a poor family and we did not have a, a vehicle. And so we lived on public transportation. And there are people in Batavia and in the Fox Valley who are in similar circumstances today. And this at least frees them up to get around town, to get to work, to, to, to better their lives and which I, I think is, is on all people to, to support this. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you for that.
Well, the other thing we're looking at at Pace Bus is potentially enlarging the bus transportation locally in the communities where we'd have a route set up in the morning. bus transportation locally in the communities where we'd have a route set up in the morning that would take, pick up people on the east side, take them out to Randall Road, or take them up to some point in Geneva. We're thinking this could become a bigger thing than what, you know, maybe these little bus stops out here can handle, so we may come up with some pulse points where we would pick up a bunch of people, like on the east side of Batavia, and maybe take them out to 38 and Randall and let you transfer onto the bus there, or whatever. This is all something that's still in the mix, but it is progressing, it is being made now, and the, the necessary component of it is putting people on, getting that bus to be able to run on I-90. I mean, that's the secret to the thing. And then the tearing down of the oasis at, at, on the 90 is opening up the opportunity to link in O'Hare Airport with it. So there's just a lot of neat things that are kind of coming together right now, and I just wanted to share that with you. Another thing I wanted to share is, is that, as you know, I have been active in the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus for many years. I'm a past chairman. I sit on the executive board because I'm a past chairman, and, and because you're one of your past chairmen, we all kind of pass these batons around the room, and then we say, well, this is another fine mess you got me into. But I got handed the baton to go, appear before the Illinois Department of Revenue on behalf of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, when they put on their presentation of their new rules that they're writing about sales tax collection and distribution in the state of Illinois. Now, there's been some interesting things that have been happening in Illinois regarding sales tax, because a few years ago, some attorneys, I guess devised what I would describe as a cottage industry, where they ran around the area and they invited various businesses throughout the six-county area that are served by the RTA to pick up their business and move it to some other town outside the six-county area. And while they stayed in Batavia, and we have at least one that were over, maybe two, while they're still in town doing business, we don't get any of their sales tax. Because what they do is, is that they charge all their sales at some distant point outside the six-county area, which is where the RTA taxes are collected. And the deal that some of these towns made, and it's no secret who they are, it's Cankey, Shanahan, and Sycamore are the three that are now named in lawsuits that are being, legally discussed. But the Illinois Department of Revenue, after a Supreme Court decision on the 15th of last November, has rewritten the sales tax laws that basically prohibit these companies from going to move into Shanahan or, or Cankey or Sycamore, and charging their sales tax there. And the idea when you went there was, is that the city said, well, welcome to our town, find a one-room place someplace and put in a fax machine, and you don't have to man it, but just say you're running your sales tax through here, and when we get the money, we'll give you the business back 80% of your municipal sales tax, and we'll keep 20% of it for the privilege of doing this for you. Well, this got to be quite an interesting situation, and so the Regional Transportation Authority got into this, and they've now got a list of about 100 businesses in the region that are doing this right now. Now, these have all been told they have to stop doing it, and I guess we're all waiting to see, but the new rules that the Illinois Department of Revenue has written say that they can't do this, and they can't say that they're taking all their business to Cankey when really they're doing a lot of it in Batavia. You've got to be able to show that you physically are doing the actual business there and moving the merchandise, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm very pleased, I spoke on behalf of the Mayor's Caucus in support of the rules that have been written, and now we are told, I guess they're going to have to go to the Illinois General Assembly, and they're going to have to make a legal document in the state that these are kind of emergency operating rules. But the more interesting thing, too, that's out there is, is that because you take your business and you move it out of the six-county area and you move it to Cankey or DeKalb or Grundy County or wherever you go, by moving it there, you immediately then don't have to pay the RTA sales tax that we all pay in anything we do. And in Kane County, that's a quarter cent on, on any purchase that goes on, but that's totally eliminated. So the RTA's figuring right now, with this 100 businesses that they now know that are outside the area, they're think they're losing up, over $100 million a year in operating revenues that are, should be paying for the Pace Bus and the Metro trains and the CTA facilities and whatever have you. And given, as an example, all the problems that Metro has had this winter with all the freezing switches and whatever, Metro's in some serious need for some infusion of upgraded equipment. And, I mean, when you're losing $100 million a year on this kind of this scam thing that's going on in Illinois, that is a kind of a tragic thing, and it's really impacted the ability of the Transit Authority to do this with moving all this money around. And it's interesting to go into the city budgets of the cities that are doing this and look at the, what they call the transfers-through monies that are going out the door to support these businesses that are moving all their money through. And there's, one of these towns, I mentioned, there's one particular activity where the RTA found that there was over $34 million a year in sales taxes that were going, being run through the town and then handed back to the business. And if it was, if it was 34 million, there's probably another 20% on to that, so that's probably about $40 million in sales tax that's being lost to the RTA because of what's going on here in this whole thing. So there's just some real interesting things happening right now, but I got to be the point man with the Department of Revenue on behalf of the Mayor's Caucus and saying, yeah, the mayors in the region think this is the way to go, have at it. And so now I guess the next battle's going to be at the Illinois General Assembly, when hopefully they'll memorialize the new regulations and put them into place so that we can kind of eliminate this idea of people playing games with sales tax. Because we think in Batavia's case, that there's at least one business that's costing us maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in lost sales tax that's being diverted out of Batavia, because we think it's down in Cankey, where it seems to have ended up, because their sales tax payments to us have gone to nothing, and somebody else is getting a lot of money. And, but the business is still here. So anyway, those things are out there, and I just wanted to share. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to publicly commend the fire department, the public works, the police department, the emergency man, uh, services, emergency management, uh, agency, for the actions that all of them participated and took at the Lingren Foundry Fire or Master Cast Fire a week and a half ago. That was a very challenging situation. It was on a cold night. It was potentially something that could have been a lot worse. And all I can say is, it's nice to have 14 neighboring fire departments that you can call over to your town at 10:30 at night and invite them to spend the whole night with you pouring water on a building that's burning up. And the other great stroke of genius that we do, and you know, not every, as we've already heard tonight, you know, there's been things that have not always worked out to our best interests. Boy, when we dropped that big water main down First Street here a few years ago and ran it from the West Side Water Tower down here to the, down here at the other end of the street so we can pump it over to the east side, that, that big water line running down First Street the other night was a piece of gold there laying in the street, because the fire department, if we'd been on that old water system in that part of town, we would have sucked the hydrants dry with the four tower ladders we had pumping on the roof of that building. So I, I really think that was a stroke of genius on our parts that we put that water main where we did, because that really was a, a nice thing to be able to support the fire department in a very needy moment there when we had the building really rolling. And I sent out to the council photographs that were taken of that fire, and you can see what a challenging situation that was. We don't get those very often. And there was just, there was, there was a lot of irony in that whole thing that I'm not going to get into, but we had everything from the helicopters hanging in the sky, taking pictures from Channel 2 and Channel 7 and, and whatever have you, and I, I was, I was, there's some in the audience that will appreciate this. We, we were out there at about, I don't know, 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night, and last time Lingren's Foundry burned up, our old fire chief was Bud Richter, and that was one of Bud Richter's great classic fires that he had during his 26 years as fire chief in Batavia, was the day he lost the pattern shop at Lingren's Foundry. And the other night, when the Channel 2 news helicopter showed up and it decided it was going to sit over Batavia for about 45 minutes and hover with its camera panned down on the scene, as near as I could tell, it was sitting over about the top of Richter and Hadley Street over on the northwest side. And I thought that was a bit ironic that the news helicopter had to sit over on top of their street and film down, because the smoke was all blowing south, and they had to get kind of northwest of the scene. And so it brought back a lot of memories, but we did have a, a very successful evening in fighting that fire, and I just appreciate what they did. So, end of my report. Mr. McGrath, you want to add something to what I just said?
No.
Oh.
How could I have been here that long? I need to bring this up. I'm sure the last thing you want to hear is somebody who wants to revisit the ordinance 14-20 on the whole of those sales tax, but despite it's not going to be working so quickly. Sales tax can only be changed by our meeting of the statute on January 1st and July 1st. And I think I heard in, in saying that the amendment that should go through should have that changed the effect of March 1st of 2017, because the tax that you just put in won't take effect until July 1st of this year. So a real three years would be, the, the, the effect of the tax change would be July 1st of 2017. And so I don't know if there's an intro back in someone's part to break away from the rules and readdress the ordinance and on that, or what, or we might have a hiatus if it is particularly going to be a four-month differential. As it is now, we're not going to actually see, see any of that money until October of November. So I think that actually three or four months is really what the intent was of this plan.
I don't, anybody, it's the, as far as I'm concerned, it's the three years. I mean, does anybody have a problem with that?
Three years. We originally wanted four years, so we're going to add four months to it, so we're right in the middle.
Perfect. Somebody's got to make a motion, though. I mean, it's, it's...
So moved.
...record and... So I guess it would be to change that effect of...
July 1st. Or July 2017. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 14-20 to change the date from April 1st to, March 1st to July 1st, 2017. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Attech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansit?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Is that a no?
No.
Homan?
No.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, 2 no, none absent. Anything else?
No.
Okay, I guess we're going to need a motion to go into executive session for the, our